Yep.
Well, I think it's really close to six o'clock.
We're good whenever, John.
Yeah. We're gonna call the planning commission meeting to order. It's November the twenty-eighth and it's about six P M. I'd like to get a couple of changes to the agenda if nobody objects. I'd like to add under old business be the township properties that we've discussed in the past for about a year and a half. And Ray Severi has a, or Ray Cocky has a presentation for that. And Brian will not be here to be, represent the board. So I'd like to have a small discussion with Cheryl. She brought up the PFAS thing at the board meeting and she's here this evening. That was one of the things that was discussed about a possible requirement for the faster people to comply with PFAS regulations.
Um, do you want to put that on the agenda?
So I'd like to add those two items to the agenda.
Okay, where were you want the PFAS, under old business also?
I wanted under the report from the trustee representative.
Oh, oh, okay.
I move to accept the changes as presented.
Can I give a second, gentlemen?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, consensus vote, please. Uh, those who favors say aye.
Aye.
Anyone object? Thank you. Any disclosure of interest, conflict of interest? I hear none. Any general public comments? Anything that's on the agenda or anything that you'd like to address the planning commission about?
Do you want to speak a little bit to the PFAS issue?
You did.
Yeah.
Please.
I'm just saying before I go there, I don't know if you want me to wait until the report from the trustee representative or you want to put the PFAS or you want to do it now.
Uh, I would prefer to do it later, Jack, so it's all continuous.
All at once, yeah.
Is there any objection to that on the?
No.
Either one of you have to leave?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Minutes of the November fourteenth meeting. Any corrections?
I just want to say we have some highlighted parts before we get into corrections. We were aware of them, it was just something that we didn't have time to research who the person's name was on Tuesday. We were trying to get the packet out before the end of the day.
That happens.
So we'll get that person's correct name and note that it was a, uh, a mean of the whole and now a public hearing.
Right. I would, um, make the motion to pass him as corrected.
Ray, is your? I, I want one comment.
Oh, you have one, okay.
Under, under old business, Roman number eight, under, under the forged project. Um, it was mentioned down there that Miles said we're not going, that we're going to remove the condition of a single access road, which is fine. But the minutes don't say where that access road is. I think it ought to say to Drumheller, so people know.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's well, well taken and we'll make that.
You're make, say that again, Ray.
They just, it ought to just say where the single access road was going, was going to go.
Yeah. Oh. Where's that at? What page? Sorry.
Oh, it's, it's on, it's on page, I didn't put the page number on. It's, it's under number eight, Roman number eight, under the project forge.
Yeah, I can't see it.
Oh, it's in that great big paragraph. Miles was township planner, was talking and it's, and it's, two thirds, two thirds of the way down the.
Got it.
Got it.
Okay. Yep.
Any other changes or?
That's it.
additions? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second?
Say it.
Thank you. Can I get a consensus vote? Those who favors say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Thank you, gentlemen. Miles, communications, I see you got a letter from Williamson Township.
Yep, uh, just as always, whenever a neighboring municipality is working on their master plan, either adopting a new one or adjusting a currently adopted one, uh, they use this letter. Williamson Township, uh, did, or Williamson Township, yeah, did in this case, so, uh, just wanted to inform the planning commission of that. So if you, yeah. So if you want to, uh, review their plan, it's posted on their website.
They're not, that, I think that's where my son lives. They're, they're not real big, are they? Williams Town Township?
Williams Township, I hate that.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why they don't go Williamson Township. I mean, the spelling's even different, but.
So, alright, and that's all we got in terms of communications.
Okay, let's move on to old business. Private roads. Understand that you had a meeting and made some changes?
Yeah, so, um, we had a little bit of a working session, um, with Mr. Severi here and Mr. Baker, uh, to go over some of the feedback that we were talking about last meeting. And just because we have a member that hasn't been here in a while, um, we'll go over how this all came to be, I guess, so we're all on the same page. So this is actually a text amendment application, or a text amendment, um, application came in from Mr. Kessler. There is some property in the township that he has control of, uh, this area, this general area of the township. And it's currently served by one private road and be looking to extend another private road. So that's kind of the impetus for all of this to come. However, if we were able to do any kind of private road development language, it wouldn't just affect Mr. Kessler and his situation. It would open Pandora's box that has previously been closed by the township not allowing the development of private roads. So we have gone full force into developing some kind of private road ordinance or allowing the development of private roads. And basically the mindset here, at least from the staff point of view and trying to work with the planning commission through this was, before the rules were, I guess, in our view, to make a long story short, was, it was like the Wild Bob West for private roads. It was like, you want a private road, you can have one, just establish it and we'll see if we like it and, you know, we'll see what happens. And then in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, they were like, okay, you know what, I was working on no private roads. I guess our, our stance was, well, there's a lot of middle ground between those two options. Like the option before was anything goes and then the current option is, well, nothing goes. And we, well, there's an option where it can go if it meets these standards. So then the question becomes, okay, well, what are the standards? So the trail that we're currently kind of going down is, there's three categories that we've tried to establish here. Uh, private drives, which now, currently, right now, a driveway, uh, is permitted by the road commission and can serve one household. We're trying to expand that to be still permitted by the road commission, but allowed to serve two households. Then we'd have small private roads, which will serve, let me check the chart, just because I've been on Thanksgiving for a week. And I'm trying to remember myself, will serve, uh, three to six. Yep, and then a large private road, which will serve seven to twelve. And the reason that, I guess, we came to those numbers and the arbitrary cutoffs, and they are somewhat arbitrary, is it's what we commonly saw as a number that would be served by a private road. And we felt like smaller numbers are easier to bring to consensus than larger numbers. When you start getting into like twenty-five households served by a private road, you really need at bare minimum an HOA in place. Even with the HOA, it becomes quite hard to bring people together to figure out, okay, how are we going to plow this thing? Where four households can meet at dinner hopefully and discuss it. Now, the problem and why we felt like we got rid of private roads a while back was, they just weren't being maintained, neighborhoods were fighting, uh, residents were in arguments with each other and/or litigation. People were constantly coming to the township, asking, can we guys make this into a public road? Like we're all at each other's throats over here. So what we've attempted to do is, through this ordinance, give the developer and/or the future property owners the tools in their toolbox to self-govern. And how we've attempted to do that is by requiring any new road that be established or any new households, that would be, uh, a land division would occur on a previously established road, but to be a new land division. They would have to buy into, uh, or they would have to establish and/or buy into some type of maintenance and access agreement. And those agreements are required to be put on file with the register of deeds and then proof be, uh, presented to the planning department and then in turn the planning commission before any permits for a private road are granted. We felt like at least having those agreements in the deed, then if, in theory, I mean, I don't know how many people read the paperwork when they go to buy a house, but you obviously should and that's on you if you don't. Um, would, you're buying into that situation. So it's a part of your deed, this access agreement, this maintenance agreement that's been set up before you bought the property, or, or if, you know, you had it developed by a developer. And then, um, if somebody in the municipality is failing to meet the terms of that maintenance agreement, the other controlling members within the maintenance agreement would be able to take legal action and at least have a very strong civil case against that owner. So in theory, that's what we're, uh, trying to accomplish. Um, I guess also, last point is, we've created kind of this cheat sheet table that helps to demonstrate as you move up in the tier of, from, you know, private drive up to large private road. The requirements become higher as you move up in tier as well. That way, we're limiting barriers to access for the developer. And then, I guess, final point here is, okay, like, why would, what's the benefit to us? Like, why are we even talking about any of this? Like, why are we even entertaining this? You can make a case that we shouldn't be talking about this, we shouldn't entertain it, there's zero benefit to us. And I'm not trying to sway anyone either way. The other, I guess, the point that we have brought up in the past of why we're even entertaining this or why we're bringing all this up, is we're currently in a housing crisis in this country. It's expensive to bring houses to market. It's expensive to buy a house right now. We're a part of the comprehensive plan of this community is to diversify the housing stock within this community. So just using the very specific example I guess we have in front of us, and again, they, you know, we're not planning for this example in particular, but this is a good one to go off of. If these one, two, three, four properties would be developed as they lie right now, the only way it would make sense for the developer on his or her pro forma to become developable and make a profit off it, is it'd have to build at the high end of the market. Maybe not the smaller property here, you could probably get like a four hundred thousand dollar home, five hundred thousand dollar home on that one and still be good to go. But you, giving away this much land to just a home sale, um, they'd probably want to put seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar homes, maybe a million dollar home on here. By allowing, uh, ordinance like this to go through, it would incentivize, in theory, again, I don't know what, no one knows what the free market will do for sure. But, um, it would at least create an incentive system for the developer to subdivide these out and hopefully build all of these into three hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollar homes. Because now they have their crews out there anyways, they can build at scale and now they can, instead of quality over quantity, they can do quantity over quality and still come out at the same profit margins. So that's kind of the why behind it. There's also a number of landlocked parcels, I use this as an example, in the township. It's a little wet back here, but there is dry portions here. There's this larger parcel here where they could subdivide. There's this parcel here. And that's, I guess, has got road frontage on that side. But there, there's not a ton of these situations in the township, but even this one, for example, having just the ability to get a second home served by a drive, you could get in our house back there. But right now, there's no real functional, mechanical way to do so, other than these people all collectively working together and somehow routing a public road back through here and then creating land divisions. Which for a bunch of homeowners, um, it's probably not doable, it's probably not within their scope. The only other way to maximize that, I guess, would be allowing some kind of, um, ADU type situation.
What's an ADU?
Uh, accessory dwelling unit. A lot of communities are moving to those, Portland, Oregon kind of piloted that and then it's become quite popular, Ann Arbor allows them now. Um, it's a, it's a good strategy on how to maximize housing within a community. But again, I think the simplest option is probably just allow a drive back here, they'll put another four hundred thousand dollar home subdivided. But then they, they would have to meet the frontage requirements, so I don't know if that would actually work. They'd probably have to go with the private drive to meet our frontage requirements for them to, they won't be able to do a driveway.
There's no limit to the length of a private drive, is there?
Yeah, there is, right now. That was, that was one thing we needed to talk about today.
I didn't see it anywhere in there, so that's why.
Yeah, it's twenty feet right now, but that's something I brought before and I think this is a good example you're showing here. If someone wanted to put another house back there, it would have to be on a private drive and it would have to be probably two, three hundred feet long.
Yeah, but I think we want it on a, I think we want it on a small private drive though anyways, because we, it's, in that scenario, as I was talking, we wouldn't want to incentivize, uh, doing land divisions with no frontage on the parcel. And we were, we had used a private drive as frontage. That's why this language is kind of, we were saying last meeting, it's a Frankenstein of a language, because we're thinking about a lot of different factors. And we've had the drain commission look at this, the road commissions looked at it, our township engineers looked at it, that's where a majority of the construction standards came from. Then finally, legal has looked at it. And then now, we have kind of put all those pieces together on what we hope is a uniform and, um, kind of functional ordinance. I, I think we're, I think we're there at this point. There's some, there's language that you could still debate is appropriate or not. This is one of those ordinances too, though, where I, I, I think however you skin it, there are so many externalities that can be created by this type of policy. Just like externalities that have been created by the policy of eliminating the ability to do private drives. It's created scenarios that we didn't foresee back in fifteen, sixteen. That's one of those things where I think you, if you're gonna do it, at some point, you're just gonna have to pull the trigger. And if something doesn't work out, you just bring it back. There's, every agency we've talked to, um, has said, yeah, I mean, it's gonna cause an effect on the township and it's hard to measure what that might be. One way that we've tried to shore up, um, urban sprawl is by, and the early part, we added in districts that it's permitted in and we removed the rural district as a permitted district where you can establish a private drive. That way, at least we put a cap on, you know, what areas in the township this can be utilized, which I think that was smart. And that's not from the department, that's from this body, you know, helping us understand what this community desires. And then, I think it's important to know, and this was something that in our meeting, uh, with members last week, we went over and is important for, I guess, the greater group to know, which is the agreements that are in this ordinance. How they're gonna actually read in Munich code, the boilerplate access and maintenance agreements. As you're scrolling through Munich code, it would be just like when you sign up for your iPhone and you have the little, um, agreement box of terms and conditions and it's another sub-box within it. And you can scroll through that if you want, but most people don't care or need to look at that, so they just scroll through the whole homepage itself. That's how this will read on Munich code. You'll have to scroll through those agreements, because if not, this is kind of a beast of an ordinance and the legal language has really built this out. Now, those agreements are suggested verbiage and we've clarified that in our language. We're giving that to the developer and to the homeowners, so they have the ability to self-government. But we realize that our maintenance and access agreements are never gonna be a one-size-fits-all. They might have to customize and edit that depending on what the situation is. So we're giving that ability to the developer. We're saying, hey, we've done some of our homework, this is what their agreement could look like, this is what we recommend, ask, at least take this format. We've highlighted above in that section what some of the key things we think are, should be included, like, uh, share costs for maintenance. Called that out and said, go at it. Get an agreement together. Now, whatever agreement they do get together ultimately will have to be reviewed by this body and accepted and permitted. So like if the agreement sucks and doesn't cover anything, you don't have to give them permit, still have the autonomy to make a decision at the end of the day. So I guess it, final note is, everything that we have here today still calls for review, form review from this body. It's not like a, um, a license to developers who just have at it. So that's kind of the broad, five thousand foot view for everyone that doesn't know what's going on in this ordinance. And we understand it's a complicated one, so we're open to any feedback and curious, obviously, what you guys think.
I think it's important, Miles, that any of the new people understand that the road commission has never gotten off of the fact that, uh, for a public road to be developed in Clinton County, it's got to have curb and gutter. And, uh, that runs the cost up immensely, not only for the developer, but also for the, the homeowner, in terms of maintenance of the road as well.
Yeah, that was one thing too that we, we talked about that everyone might not understand that here is, we went to the road commission early on and we said, the, the clearest path forward here was just for the road commission to create like a subset of their standards to say, we're willing to, like, waive some of this in this situation. But the road commission's point was, well, hey, like, that might be all well and good for Southern Bath Township, but we got Old County to think about here and we're not gonna open Pandora's box, because God knows what's gonna go on in Victor Township if we're allowed something like that to happen. It's like, what incentive do we have to change? None at all. We're trying to shore up our, our own system here. And I understand that. Um, so again, that's why it created the impetus to kind of go down this path.
I have what I think is a simple question. So I did a little bit of Google searching. And so I found a couple state laws related to private roads. I, I just wanted to confirm that our proposed ordinance is in alignment with those state laws.
And that's why we sent it to legal counsel. We don't send every ordinance that we review to legal counsel, but this one definitely called for it.
So there's a formation of a jury, uh, developed by the supervisor?
We had something like that in, we took it out.
Okay, so that. Alright, cool.
They had a conflicting statement in here. And then it had a way to resolve the statement by getting the township involved. I said, get rid of the conflict and we get rid of the township involvement. So that's kind of what happened.
Yeah, so, and again, the road commission, and, and I guess, another important note here is, this ordinance is loosely in structure modeled off Clayton County's private road ordinance. So they have a private road ordinance and they allow private roads, because they ran into some similar issues, uh, that we're running into with the road commission and kind of hindering development. Now, the only difference is, we're expanding upon what they allow. So we're going a little bit past what they allow. They're, they're being more conservative and I think their hard cap was like six households overall, and we're going to twelve.
Miles, do you want to point out the changes that the committee has suggested?
I mean, there's a number.
There's a lot.
Yeah, do you, yeah.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, I mean, almost every page had a number of changes. I'm trying to think of some of the highlighted ones.
A lot of them had just wording changes where we talked about private roads and private drives and a lot of the verbiage in here.
And streets.
And, and streets. So we took all the reference to streets out, because if it's a street, it's public. But some of these things talked about private drives and private roads when it should have just been one or the other.
Right. Or they only talked about one, when it should have been both.
Should have been both, right. So we kind of cleaned all that kind of, that was just, didn't really change the intent of the ordinance, but just kind of cleaned it all up a little bit.
We did change, when it comes to the table itself, we just referenced other sections that expanded upon it down here. Uh, we allowed for gravel drives, you know, even on the, or gravel roads, even on the large private road, where before we removed the gravel language. Because obviously, even on the public road side, we have public roads serving, you know, a hundred households. So why, why are we requiring, if we're trying to lower barriers entry, it was counterproductive to what the intent of the language was. We made sure that we had enough, uh, that everything was wide enough to function. We clarified, um, before you get to the agreements here and the required access and maintenance agreements for private drives and private roads, we clarified a lot of what those agreements were hoping to accomplish. What this body would like to see from the developer, um, or controlling entity. And then we also just called out, like, these agreements can take whatever form, you know, the developer feels they should take, but at the end of the day, they're gonna be reviewed by this body. And these are some factors that we highly suggest this agreement include. So trying to just like really break it down for people. We did toy around with the idea of, um, reformatting all of this and going into where we break it down, we're redoing the whole layout of this and going like, section one, private drive. Section two, small private road. Section three, large private road. We moved away from that in that meeting, because you would have to reiterate so much language, it actually made the whole ordinance three times longer. So. And we felt like it was getting pre-built out as it is.
Well, there's no rush to take action on this, gentlemen, because nobody's gonna be taking any action on this in, for at least a couple of months, I'm sure. What's your feeling? Do you want to review this some more? Do you want to, uh, recommend it? Go to the board?
Hey, just a couple, a couple of small more, in what we've got here. In the maintenance agreement itself, on page five.
Five.
Section four.
I'll try to zoom in for the audience here.
Voting.
Yep.
This came up because, where it was written before, as I was just talking to Jason about, is we had a conflict in this section of setting things up. Each parcel, in section two, each parcel can, has got to name one person to be their representative. Down in the voting section, it said, anybody can vote. And we took that out. So the last sentence of section four says, now I vote for each parcel may be exercised by persons, section, in section two. I think that S should go away, it should be by the person, because each parcel.
Each parcel gets one vote.
Yeah, they've already designated their person earlier.
Right, yeah. So they'll just take that persons and say the person.
The person.
And that'll take care of that one.
Yeah, and I'm fine, especially because we do have a new member and this is a complicated ordinance and, uh, no, no one's doing anything to the spring here regardless. And I, I want to make sure we get this one right, because there is, um, a lot of implications through this. If we want to take some time to look at this, we're fine with bringing that back to the next meeting.
You have that highlighted up there. Are you not gonna erase it, are you?
No, 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 I was just highlighting for the audience what we were talking about.
And down in section six, which is next, just a little bit further down the page, that talks about, um, how the costs are gonna be shared. I think we know what the intent is, but I'm not sure this is clear to somebody who doesn't know what the intent. The intent that we talked about was is that your share would be, would be prorated based on the total road, road frontage of all parcels. And yours would be a percentage based on the amount of road frontage your, your parcel has. So if your parcel is ten percent of the road frontage, you pay ten percent of the cost. I'm not sure that's what this says, this.
Okay, well, we can wordsmith that. Yeah, but we tried to change, we, we tried to change it up a little bit, because how it was ran from the legal counsel was, it was prorated based upon the overall square footage of the lot. And I get where they were going with that, they were trying to make it the most equitable possible. And we want it to be equitable too, but we thought it was almost, it, it almost harmed, it punished people for having large lots. But that doesn't necessarily translate to what their overall usage of the road is. So if you want it to be ex, most equitable, you would go off frontage. Because somebody could have like a Y-shaped lot, for example. Now they're being punished, even though the road frontage itself is only a hundred feet. Now, if somebody has five hundred feet of road frontage, but like, let's say their lot's not very deep. And but now, but let's say they're going off of like overall square footage of the lot, they're taking up five hundred feet of road. But they're only paying in maintenance for the square footage of their lot. Now their neighbor might have a super deep lot, but might only have, let's say, a hundred feet of road frontage. Now they're paying, um, they're paying all the maintenance costs, but using very little of the road. Where this guy is using a bunch of the road and paying very little, so it's actually the opposite of intent.
Can I play around with that?
Yeah.
So if you have a lot of road frontage, how are you utilizing that road to your advantage versus, you're simply ingressing and egressing?
Because the more road frontage you have, the more you're creating a situation for that road to have to be longer, right? So if you have like five hundred feet of road frontage, then, let's say, we have six households served by a road. And let's say household one has five hundred feet and households two through six all have a hundred feet. Well, household one, by the nature of their lot and their lot's dimension, had now created a situation where the first five hundred feet of said road is all to serve them essentially, because that's how they get into their driveway. Now, everyone else has to pay for that, because they all want to get into their driveway too.
So. I mean, another way of looking at that is, the last parcel on the road utilizes the road the most, right?
Yeah. But that's, that's the most fair way to do it, when we're thinking about the most equitable way.
Well, and, and think about other utilities, right? If you think of a road as a utility, I mean, if you were to pay to have electric, gas, internet, uh, wired all the way to that last parcel.
Yeah.
You're of course gonna pay.
But, but utilities do do that. When it's, like, if you wanna establish broadband.
Yeah.
Right? Now, if, once the utility's set and it's running, it's all just a per month fee. But if you wanted to bring broadband yourself, if they've got carried five hundred feet, they're charging five hundred feet.
Well, that's part of, I mean, the parallel there would be, you know, the road, a running road all the way to that last parcel. So I.
No, you can make an argument either way, and obviously, we have no dog in the fight or a dog in the hunt here. We don't care however you guys wanna do it. We just took the lawyer's equity mindset and we shifted it. We, I guess we wanted to create some middle ground between like what most people, I think, would perceive as the most fair way to do it, which is six households are served by the road, they should just take maintenance costs and divide by six.
Yeah.
And so that would be like one end of the spectrum. Our end of the spectrum was the lawyer's way of saying, well, you have the biggest lot, so you obviously are the most wealthy.
It's the but for rule, you know, but for the first five hundred feet for, uh, resident A.
Yeah.
Those other people wouldn't even be able to get to their properties, so.
Yeah.
That's, you know.
I guess our mindset was like, we took the two ends of the spectrum and by using frontage, we ended up in the middle of those two mindsets. All, all three options are on the table. We can write however people want it.
I suggest we all read this judiciously and come up with, you know, at our next meeting, let's discuss it before we send it to, uh.
Even if you have some ideas over the week.
I'm just wondering, I mean, you could play around with the data in terms of combining, creating a metric out of the square frontage and the road frontage. Or perhaps distance from the, uh.
Yeah, you gotta remember though, too, you don't wanna spend, we don't wanna spend too much time doing this, because at the end of the day, this is all a suggestion.
Yeah.
The developer is likely to amend and change a lot of this.
Jason, are you arguing that we should have a formula to?
I mean, it's another, I mean, if we're gonna talk about equity versus equality, I mean, you can certainly.
You know, we could go down, yeah, we could go down that all day, and that's why I just said, like, preface, like, hey, you don't wanna spend too much time here. Because at the end of the day, developers are gonna change it to whatever, or whatever their lawyer's preference might be.
But we would still have final say.
You would still have final say, yeah.
I, I think if, if a developer was involved in something like this, he's gonna make his lots relatively the same size if he can.
Yeah, that would be the goal.
And, and so then, then like Jason's saying, it was exactly what HOAs do. We've got sixty-two homes on our HOA. Everybody pays exactly the same.
Yeah.
The services you receive are not the same. And one of the big examples was their leaf pickup. One of the streets has a lot of leaves. The other one doesn't have very many, but they basically pay the same.
Yeah, and if the developer structures it like that, the likely structure of our language in a similar way. And then what we're talking about now is kinda all known void, so that's why. You could argue it a lot of ways, but that's why we kinda went with like a middle option, cause like, no matter what they do, we'll just be right in the middle.
Well, yeah, if, if you had a, a person, person A has a forty acre parcel. And then they decide to subdivide it, the forty acres to put excellent houses back in there. Those parcels could be a lot.
Looking for action maybe next week, because I don't think we should let this go too long, cause if you people have properties, they wanna plan this one.
Yeah, you don't want to go too long, yeah. But, I, just cause we have a new member, there's a couple of things that we talked about tonight.
Don't delay it on my behalf. I'm comfortable moving with this.
The, the, the other thing about using front footage too is one thing we talked about was, the person's got large front footage, he's paying more. But at some point, he may split that lot in half.
It's interesting too, like, if you have five hundred feet of frontage, now you gotta split.
We discussed that.
And that does create, and the nice thing about this language, yeah, I forgot about that whole conversation, is it creates a little bit of an incentive structure for them to divide out. Which the whole point here is to, the whole point of the whole thing is to create housing stock. So create by, this is like almost like a sneaky incentive we snuck in to, uh, to incentivize somebody to create another house.
Yeah.
So it's kinda like another part of the thing in here where it says that if the people can't agree, and the township gets involved and sets something, something up for through the township. If the township wants to do it, they can do it, but there will be a twenty-five percent administrative fee for doing that. What's that?
Do we add that?
That, that was in there to begin with. I said, well, you leave that in there, that's a good disincentive for them to even ask.
Which I literally had somebody call me today about that.
I only have one more comment, but on section fifty-eight, forty-six, which I think is back in the.
What page you on, Ray?
Uh, I should've written.
Forty-six, I'm going there.
It's page nine.
Thank you, thank you.
Page nine, okay. See, that's section, yeah, it's actually on page ten, pretty much. Page nine is a good place to start. Both small private road and large require four foot shoulders.
Yep.
In section five, it only talks about the large private road. We need to add small private road in there too.
Good catch.
Cause they both require that four foot shoulder.
Yeah, the one says four feet shoulder and the other one says two feet, doesn't it?
No.
No, they'll say four.
I think, you think of the two foot, the two foot one, when we first started this, was a two foot shoulder on a private drive.
Yeah.
That says, private drives don't have shoulders.
Yeah, yeah, it's not much shoulder.
So we took it out.
You have grass.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Yeah, see, that's a good catch. I mean, that's the type of stuff we're looking for, and every time I feel like we read this, we catch something, cause there is so much language that bounces off each other and plays off each other.
So what do you think we should do, John?
Uh, I've got a couple of concerns. Uh, the original that Mr. Kessler brought to us, there's two people, if I remember right, that are presently served by this private road. And do not pay any fees. Are you gonna make this somehow retroactive so that they have to pay for this? I presume that's up to the developer.
Yeah, it is right now. There's no requirement from us to make that happen. And I guess the reason for that is there's so many, we thought about doing it like that, but there's so many unforeseen circumstances. We thought it was almost unenforceable.
Well, and I think it would be kind of unfair to make it retro, you know?
Well, that's my concern, yeah.
Again, if you feel like there's like, let's say, ten households and they're looking to, uh, currently served by a private road, and they're going to extend it. And the township feels like those ten will be harmed somehow by the extension, then, I mean, the the premise would be like vote no on that when it comes to before this body. Unless the developer's willing to provide good reasoning as why they wouldn't be harmed.
I did have one more thought on this thing. Back on page nine again. We talk about, talk about the, uh, standards. They both read now for small and large private roads that the road shall have a minimum of three inches of asphalt.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
There were shells in there, and then I, we talked about it, and I said, it doesn't make sense for us to require an asphalt road for a private road. We could suggest that it should be asphalt, and so it's some word is back here that says we can change that. But I'm suggesting we take that word shell and change it to should, or, or, we recommended asphalt, but.
May.
Cause shell doesn't.
Shell, shell says, you gotta do it.
Yeah, I, I understood.
I changed that shell to something.
I got it.
Yep.
Think it should be should or something.
May, yeah.
Out of curiosity, are there standards for depth of material for gravel versus asphalt elsewhere specified?
Yeah, there are.
Yeah.
It goes down. This whole section is construction standards.
That was, that, that was put together by the engineer.
Put together by the engineer. That's why I really stayed out of this, cause it's not my forte. I don't know anything about all this. These are from the township engineer. All we've done is attempted to play, copy and paste and play around with what they provided. And then this was looked at the, by the road commission after that, and they were like, ah, it's feasible.
Sometimes I think our statewide road standards are driven more by cost of building the road than they are by the way they should be real. Built. You go drive roads in, in the north, you can't compare them to the ones in the south, but the one in the north, there are states that have a lot better roads than we do. They have the same weather that we do. It's gotta be money.
Agreed to that. Alright, John, so you're.
So what's the, what's the feeling? Wanna look at this for a couple of weeks, bring it back?
We usually had a couple of concerns, what you had, a little concern.
Oh, what are you gonna do about the developer that develops the farthest lot? And then who's gonna pay? Is the developer gonna pay until all the lots are developed?
I think so.
That's the current method of financing roads.
Yep.
Yeah.
So he's gonna be responsible, he or she, for all of the maintenance and upkeep of the road until all the lots are developed.
Yeah, I think the way it worked in, in a condo association, like where I live, the developer builds all the roads, when he sells the lots, that's when he recoups his cost of building the road in the sewer and the water main and stuff like that. Be the same thing here, I think, that developers can pay for it upfront, and he's gonna recoup his costs when he sells those other lots.
But he's not gonna recoup the cost of the maintenance of the road, is my point, right?
Oh, no, he won't, that's true.
Only as those people come on.
He'll only recoup that as he gets all the lots developed.
Encourages him to do it fast.
Yeah.
It eats away at the bottom line.
That's a good thing from our point of view, is creating an incentive structure for them to actually follow through. But that's something that we could actually refine in language.
I think we should, yes. And I don't really know how much this is gonna affect cost, Miles. Right now, it's about sixty-seven dollars a foot for curb and gutter. Um, so I don't know what that affects the fillable, fillab, availability of a, of a house, whether it's gonna be fifty thousand or eighty thousand, or whether it's ten thousand.
There's no, there's no curb and gutter required in here, though.
No, but I'm saying presently, Ray, for a developer to build a public road is about sixty-seven dollars a foot. Additional costs for the curb and gutter.
That's for the curb and gutter, and, well, that's not just curb and gutter.
Yes, both sides of the road, yes.
Oh, well, yeah, I guess sicky act would be.
Yes.
Yep.
So I've been going back to whether or not we act on this. Um, I'm comfortable acting upon it. Uh, in part because, I mean, it lays the foundation. It sounds like there's been a bunch of eyes on this. Um, but in the end, this body will review the application, and that's where we'll learn from the strengths and weaknesses of this.
Correct, yeah, it's gonna be a learning curve, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With that rationale, maybe we should, you know, move on.
Whatever this committee feels.
To, can I?
Absolutely.
Do you have a recommendation on that?
Yeah, if, if a motion is made tonight, just please, uh, state the motion as, uh, with, you know, make a motion to approve this or recommend this to the board of trustees with, uh, um, the suggested edits.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, George, what were you gonna say?
That's, I just wanted to know, um, our planner's opinion before we, whether we should wait or not. That's what, that's what I was asking.
Well, we have two, uh, people from the board here this evening. Um, would anybody have any objections if I asked them what they felt? Whether they'd support this or not? Yeah, is there any objection?
I'm sorry, I was probably.
There are none? That's okay, I'm sorry, Jack. I was just saying, uh, I assume that you've read through this and you heard the discussion. Do you feel that this is something the board would suggest, would support at this point, or is it a non-starter?
It's a good question. I will, uh, I'll use my usual escape route by saying, I haven't really interacted with these board members I'm sitting with currently.
Yep, I understand.
And I really don't have a, a feel for where they're at on some of these things, and that's the honest answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
You guys have dug into it and.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, what's the feeling, gentlemen? You wanna make a motion to move this to the board with the suggested changes?
Yes. Support.
Okay. Miles, I think I'd like to take a voice move.
Okay. My list together here. Okay, let me try and do this here. Uh, Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer? Kramer, sorry. Alright, Chair Wright?
Yes.
Few ones' voices absent, and then, um, Commissioner Cocke?
Yes.
And Commissioner Severi?
Yes.
And, um, Commissioner Almarin, you're on my list.
Yes.
Okay. I need to get a list together, so I'm wrapping fire that off like Brenda.
Thank you.
You've got the changes noted, Miles, in the.
Yep, I got them noted. I will make those edits.
Okay, let's move on to the township properties.
Okay, Miles, I, I just emailed you the, the two PDFs.
Okay.
If, if, you know, why don't you put up the first one, just to exemplify it?
What'd you say? Is this the same list you gave us once before?
Just wanna make sure you just caught up with this.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just pulling off, I'm all good.
Did any of you have a chance to look at that list that I sent to you last meeting? I, as we were sitting here, I, I emailed it.
Yeah, I did look at that.
Except you, I, I still can't find your email address. I know I've emailed you before, but, um, if you have mine, please just send me the email right now.
I'll reply to you.
Um, this is the list here, and it's color-coded. Um, and there are sixty-two properties, according to Fetch GIS, that's where I ran the search. And the red are unsaleable because they're, you know, like the community gardens, cemeteries, things of that nature. The green are the park, uh, properties. The black are the ones that are possibly saleable. And those are pending some, uh, very diligent research on whether or not there is stipulations. As Miles brought out to me, he, um, wanted, wanted me to check. Us to check, to see if there are some stipulations, like the Poly Aqua, if you're familiar with that property. Um, Miles, if, yeah, right there, that, to the, to the east, all of those subdivided parcels are Poly Aqua. The township owns the first nine, starting from the bottom up. Um, and then that other par, parcel between Poly Aqua and Webster Road right there, that long skinny parcel. Um, well, I think I have a pointer, I could probably point to that. Poly Aqua is, Poly Aqua Shores was the name of the, um, subdivision. Let me see if, I, no, I guess, hell, yeah, it does work.
Sweet.
This right here, if you can see my pointer, this is Poly Aqua, right here and right here. Okay? And this parcel, can you move, can you get that, get rid of that right there? And this parcel right here is part of that. Now, if you highlight that, Miles, that, that parcel there. If you'll notice, it's separate because there's a private property right there, but it's contiguous with this one. It's the, the same parcel number. But that lot right there on the corner of Lindberg and Webster is vacant.
contiguous.
And it's a, it's almost a triple lot, and it looks ideal for like a, a duplex or something of that nature, even a triplex, you know?
Yeah, this part, this part.
Yeah, and it's, and it's a very nice lot. I think it would be very saleable, and I really don't think we would ever use it, because that private parcel is in between there. I don't think we'd ever really use it, unless you wanna make a pocket park out of it or something and put a couple of benches there. But, uh, you know, if, if, and then we could use that money towards other projects.
Yeah, I guess the, the concern from staff about this parcel in particular, and this is just coming mostly from our assessor, Beth Bocky, was, and I mean, her memory is like, it's a superpower, but, um, I, she remembers that there was some agreement that came with when this property was donated to the township.
Well, and, and.
I've done the research to confirm.
I asked her too, and that was why I asked you about the, the files, you know, hard copy, and I'm gonna talk to Register of Deeds about this. Um, but it would have to be, I guess my next question would be, do you know if each and every parcel that the township owns, do we have to have a deed?
Yeah.
I mean, we do have a deed for each property.
Yeah.
So I could go to the Register of Deeds, the parcel number, and find out if there's a stipulation, because if there's a stipula, a legal stipulation, it would be written on.
I would think so, unless it was some kind of agreement we, we down inside, but again, like, this is outside of my scope of expertise.
Well, those were.
Best territory here.
I have the original property, uh, the original plating for that, uh, Poly Aqua Shores. and that property that, that we're, we're talking about right now was, was already platted before Poly Aqua Shores. And Poly Aqua Shores was platted in nineteen twenty-nine, so it's been a long time. Yes. Wait, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I, I haven't been part of this conversation, I, can you remind me, kind of what the inception was, and like, what the purpose and goal of this process is?
Okay, it, Miles, if you would, put that, those two questions up there, so that, uh, the ones that haven't seen it can read them. Um, can you make it a little beer? There you go. And our, and our audience can read that too. Those are the only two pertinent questions, or, you know, to suppositate if you want to buy or sell a parcel. And I gleaned this from looking at probably a half a dozen or more other township and city, um, questions that they utilize. I couldn't tell you exactly which one this was, I think it was Garfield, but, um.
Can I speak to what the impetus of us, like, even talking about this tonight is, I guess that's your question, as I understand, um. So there had, the board in the past, and I think you might have been on the board when this came to the planning commission, was we had, there was some discussion about buying or selling a property at the time, I forget if it was buying or selling, but, um, they sent it back to the planning commission to say, hey, can you guys take a look at this and give us a recommendation of what to do here?
Yeah, some pre-motion.
Yeah, and at the time, we had a, or the planning commission as a body hadn't really thought about how to answer a question like that. So impetus here was, okay, if the board ever wants us to, or wants the planning commission to weigh in on that question, what are, what's some metrics, or how, how have we come to a non-biased, uh, standard answer every single time?
Right, yeah.
And so there, that's where these statements come in. At the time, what we ended up doing was going through the goals of the comprehensive plan, and then a scoring matrix, and saying, doesn't meet goal one, or it's five points, you know? So we have these questions here, and then, uh, Commissioner Cockney has taken this information, and then he's creating an inventory of the properties and looking at what's even on the table here, what are we even talking about? So I think that's impetus for the first part that I led off with tonight.
And I, I certainly don't expect anybody on the, on the board to intimately know the parcels that the township owns, like I do, I mean, I, I'm kind of a bookworm in that respect, or like Jason, he likes data, and so do I. And I, uh, ten years ago, I was looking at Fetch and going through everything, and of course, it was my, it was my fantasy about the, the Park Lake Trail and nature preserve. And I wanted to know all, all about those properties, and it was just a, a personal interest, because I grew up, when I was, when I was a kid, ten, twelve years old, I rode my bike and hunted and everything over there. And it was vacant then, and that was in the late sixties, so, and to this day, it's still vacant. So that was why we decided to do this, so that you guys can have a definitive standard to go by for each and every parcel that you either wanna buy or sell. And it's been of, of late, Karen has just been rightfully so, seized an opportunity to get a parcel, because land lately is going like this. It's kinda slowed down now, but, um, she made a couple of good snaps, you know, for the township.
There's not gonna be anymore land.
Yeah, so, and there were metrics that were based on the comprehensive plan?
Yes, we ad hoc did at the time.
And tho- those are, have been abandoned, or are those still on the table?
It could be on, I mean, anything's on the table, what is it going to be banned?
We were, we were asked about a year and a half, or two years ago, to evaluate the parcels that the township had in their repertoire of parcels.
In their inventory?
In their inventory, whatever you wanna call it, to see if they were appropriate, to, should they be retained, should they be possibly sold, should? And obviously, part of the Planning Enabling Act says that the planning commission is supposed to weigh in on any properties that are sold or purchased by the township.
They could, the point, they could weigh in on it, but at the end of the day, the sole responsibility for buying and selling property is rest with the board, city council, elected members of the municipality. So I think, eh, if I was to suggest how this process may work, and this is my suggestion.
Absolutely.
Would be that, you know, this body, um, reviews its metrics, reviews what it sees as within the scope of good land use policy for some of these properties, or properties that would need to be required. And then they would feed that information to their liaison, to the board, and the liaison to the board should then bring it to the board.
Right.
And if the board wishes to get further info, they could kick it back to the PC. Um, but it, that's the kind of process it should work, I mean, this body, in, in my view, and I think legally, doesn't have the ability to dictate, obviously, what the board does.
Definitely not. No, we do not, we can only recommend.
Um, I'd like comments on the two, if you have any, after reading those prospects? Anything? I kind of wordsmithed them a little bit, just.
I guess the concern I have, Ray, is, and I, I know I've been around for a long time, probably too long in some ways, but, a lot of these properties were donated to the township at one point in time, and I don't know if there were any restrictions put on them at the time they were donated.
Well, that would be, you know, the onus would be on the board, you know, if and when they decide, okay, we wanna sell this property, but they'd have to do their due diligence, just like you would have.
Somebody would, yes, yeah.
I mean, and if there's a stipulation right on that warranty deed that says, you know, this property was donated and shall never be, be sold, or digested, or devastated, I should say.
I, I guess, my position would be, should that be done before, we would make a recommendation to sell the property, or if we made that recommendation and the township said we need more information, at that point, we go back and research it?
Well, I, I, if we're gonna make a, a recommendation for them, I'll just say sell. Maybe we should have a process by which we do a title search, you know, to see if it's saleable.
I guess that's my concern.
Yeah. It's kind of a COYA thing, I guess, for us, you know?
Right, right.
We don't wanna be red-faced and say, oh my god, you know, there's.
Right, exactly.
Twenty years back taxes on this property.
Right, right, or, or it was donated with a stipulation.
And you know, this, Miles, in relation to that, that property that's not designated over there, that's township property, that Beth may, says she may remember something about, and I asked her about it too, and she said she doesn't know anywhere of any written, uh, you know, stipulations, if you will. And if there literally aren't any legal written stipulations, then time has passed, I mean, decades and decades and decades, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to sell it.
Yes, I think that, again, you know, you could say, the pla- the planning commission by majority vote could say, hey, this is one of the par-, you know, this is a suite of parcels we recommend to be sold, um, we're giving this recommendation to our liaison, eh, eh, you know, take this to the board. They take it to the board, I would say at that point, the board can decide, they could be, ah, well, you know, it's a good idea, but we don't feel like doing that right now.
Yeah.
Or they could say, ah, that's a good idea, but now we need to do a title search, and there would be the body to, huh, cuz that's gonna cost money.
Oh, yeah.
They, they need to be the body to determine that.
Yeah, that's a good point, cuz there are, you know, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Jason had it.
Jason, go ahead.
So, eh, I mean, now I'm starting to remember part of where this came from. I, I, I think a couple of the goals are, um, helping the board understand what are the assets of the community, um, or of the township. I, not just how much property value do we own, but what are the available uses of those properties?
Right.
Do they fit within a plan, or do they not?
Yep.
I mean, the set of questions I would have is, of what community benefit does retaining this land have? And that's it, if it does, if it has no benefit, then, then it's up to the board to decide what to do with it.
As the purpose is.
Sell it, donate it?
Well, it, it may not have benefit now, but if something transpires, then it may have benefit later. So let's say something expands, and now we're into a different space, now that space that was vacant is now usable for the township.
Now, I would imagine that there, there are parcels that, you know, have future use.
Correct.
Uh, as defined by however we define that. But it's giving the information and the tools to the board to then, you know, have an understanding with what are the possibilities when it comes to, uh, uh, the resources that we have as a township.
I, I think that was the intent at the time, yes.
Yeah. And that's pretty much what the broad aspect of that first statement says, you know? That we need to weigh whether or not it's gonna be possibly used in the future for parks, public grounds, markets.
Are you saying though, almost making like a third category here, cuz we have purchase, so you're saying the third category, retain?
No, I would say, uh, one category of what is the purpose and value of, of the property?
Yeah, to retain it in the inventory.
Well, and it could be that's the, the, the purpose and value is that it has, uh, primed future use based on whatever the criteria are.
Right.
Uh, in terms of the prospect of selling, I mean, I, I, I don't know if that's necessary, I mean, you know, I don't know what the other means of offlet.
Yeah, it wouldn't even be in the sell category, the category would be, we should retain this, we should.
Retain it.
So the, the statement that you make, if, if you put it in the way, you, when you answer that question, then the sale, retain, would be in that answer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that was kind of what I meant on the, on the second term, on the prospect of selling. If it doesn't meet all of those requirements right there, then it shouldn't, I mean, it should be retained. And if it does meet all those requirements, you know, if it's not required for any future use, or the comprehensive plan doesn't address that, you know, to even be a possibility, there's three parcels, I believe, that I'd like to show that fall under that category, in my opinion. But they're a pretty gray area that, that the board will have to determine. So if, Miles, we could go to, yeah, to go to Fetch, that first one I mentioned, that one right there, um, that would have to be subdivided off that other property, and then why don't you go up Webster Road and show that one? Cheryl, you probably don't know about this, but the township owns, I think it's a seventeen acre parcel, north of Slate Road, and they, they just use, they just use it, it's, yeah, it was an old gravel pit, and there's some wetlands right there in front by Webster Road, it's on the east side of the road, if you ever wanna go look at it. But if you see that round portion up there, they use it to like, when they cut brush, they take it over there and dump it, and they keep, you know, dirt and other kinds of stuff, but in essence, that right there could be a small subdivision.
What's your, what's the third parcel?
Uh, the third one is Slate Road.
You're talking about that, when you said they, who's they, the dumb stuff there?
Uh, uh, yeah, DPW, that's it, that, that DPW is the only thing that uses that. Okay, just go down a little bit on the screen, to the, to the high school track, it's over to the east. Right there, now go up one, right there, that parcel right there is a five acre parcel owned by the township. And as I recall, it's been a long, it's been forty, fifty years since I've been over there, but I think it was, it has a big hill at the top and goes down, and I think kids were using it, that was the old sledding hill, yeah, see the, the contours? Um, and I just called it the sledding hill, because I think that's what it was used for at one time, and kids, I don't even think they sled anymore, but, uh, um, that, that right there is another prime parcel that could be.
Do we own Upton Road, Clark Road's west-south corner?
Southwest corner of Clark Road?
Clark and Upton.
Clark and Upton, oh, that's the next one, but yeah.
Okay, it's a big, a big piece.
That's seventeen acres, yes, but that is a designated parkland, and it was, I know this, the MDOT.
You were right on it.
MDOT donated it to the township, but we can never sell it.
We can never sell it.
Yeah.
Or use it, we could be a park there, or.
Yeah, and, and, in Parks and Rec, when I was in Parks and Rec, we did a lot of studies on that, and, and in fact, we even did a public meeting on it. And there were such things as a disc golf, there was a dog park, there was a baseball diamond, you know, just a plethora of things that people wanted to have there. Cuz there's nothing over that lower quadrant down there, so I would, I would think, you know.
High and dry.
Yeah, well, it, there's some low spots in it, but it would be great for a portion to be a dog park, and then, then put a baseball diamond there or something.
Well, it's a great location for traffic, it's, it's, uh.
Yeah, yep.
You have something, Jason. So the, the other parts, um, that is on the purchase, and providing some guidance and parameters around when to purchase and what tools to implement while purchasing. And this reminds me of some DDA property that was accepted by the township that had, um, contamination on site. Um, and whether or not we should have accepted it, uh, and so, um.
Could you point that out? Is it right downtown?
Yes, yeah.
There are three parcels down there, uh, two of them are the community garden, and then there's another one that's really a lowland swamp, almost.
Right next to the old railroad, right away.
Yeah.
In fact, it's part of the old railroad.
Okay, and there's probably arsenic or whatever from the railroad in there.
A lot of crease, so timbers.
Well, they use arsenic too, on killing weeds and everything.
Yes.
Really just, and that's one of the problems of, of a railroad grade, an old railroad grade especially, is that they just willy-nilly sprayed it, to kill the weeds, to keep them off.
They're all contaminated.
Yep.
So the, the, eh, the remaining question is, you know, what is the guidance that the township has when it comes to purchasing land? Or acquiring land, whether it's by gift or donation? Um, and in what ways can we protect ourselves from, uh, liability? And so I don't know if anything exists right now, I, I mean, it sounds like, you know, we take advantage of opportunities for prime real estate, which I think a set of, uh, language could accommodate. But in other situations, where might we want to employ environmental audits, or other?
What, if I may, which, what I've seen in the past, Karen religiously, when, you know, uh, given the appropriate permission by the board to go after a parcel, um, ha- first thing she does is have an environmental assessment.
Phase one, phase one of our real assessment.
Yeah.
But that's a good point, um, not to jump in here, staff, but, um.
You're part of this too.
No, but, um, yeah, I think that's a, a good point, if you're in this purchasing phase, there's probably something about, you know, the township conducting due diligence prior to any purchase, almost like a disclaimer. If this is gonna be language that you send up to the board.
Well, and I, you know, it, on that, on that conversation, the, the parcel that she, Karen just went after, on the north side of Park Lake Road, by Rickard Lane, I believe it is. Most people don't know it, but there's been a general consensus that we wanna make a non-motorized trail or pathway from the beach to Wiswasser Park. And that lends itself well, because it came with two parcels right on the lake.
Yeah.
I don't know if you two have had an opportunity, you're, you're both the new, newbies on the, on the commission, so. It's actually down, way down farther, Miles.
Oh, yeah, zooming in.
Down, yeah.
We bought those, right?
Um, she's in the process, well, those two, that's the Gupta property, that's another one, now.
Okay. Which one are you talking about?
Go to, uh, go to the Creamery.
Okay.
It's next to the Creamery.
And then, and then go east of the Creamery, right along the lake, right there. Okay, now go east. No, you're going west.
You're going west.
My bad.
Sorry, right there, those two parcels are the, that parcel right there, that one, stop, right there. Yeah, that one is the one that comes with the property that she is purchasing across the road, I should say that we are purchasing.
Yeah.
That weird parcel right there.
Yeah.
For the purposes of a non-motorized trail along there. Um, that's an easement we wouldn't have to get if we bought the property, and then directly west there, Miles, are those two parcels, no, west, down, right there.
I'm going.
Okay, right there, though, I, I should have my pointer, I'm sorry.
You're okay.
But those two parcels are already owned by the township. Um, and incidentally, those were the ones that the Creamery wanted to purchase.
And we bought them.
Well, we owned them, they wanted them, they, he wanted to buy them from the township. And they, and right across the road to the north there, Miles, is, uh, an empty lot that could very well lend itself to another over, overflow parking, if you will. So.
Yeah, the planning department was asked to provide a report to the board, uh, on what our, and, and similar to what you guys are doing, except for the board asked the planning department to do it.
Yeah.
So, and, kind of like, within the scope of our department, we looked at the land use potential, as you were stating of these, and we said, our recommendations, no, don't do that. Hey, there's good potential here for future development and growth of municipal facilities.
Don't sell it, is what you were saying, yeah.
Don't sell it, yeah.
Yep. So that's, um.
But that's the type of language that I think this body needs to, and I'm, my recommendation is this body firms up some language like that. That way, when these things come up, it's just ready to go, it shouldn't be something that the planning department's ad hoc, ad hocly putting together, uh, for the board, it should be something that's a, a policy of this body.
Yep, well, if there's time, you know, then I think we should evaluate a purchase, and to know, I, I guess, I should.
Yeah, but if they send it to, I guess, our point and what, or my point, and what the board is asked to do, and ask, if they give it to this body to evaluate, than you would, but if you have a policy in place, at least, at least you'll have something they can refer to every time.
Correct, I mean, I'm just speaking to these Carpe Diem kind of scenarios that, that, uh, the township has gotten into with this non-motorized trail. I guess ideally, what, what you should see is, is a plan. You should see like a CIP, a major CIP for this, you know, multi-year, non-motorized pathway to go around.
It'd be a strategic plan.
Excuse me?
A strategic plan.
Yeah, uh, you know, so that you could say, oh, well, look at right there, right here, this property, we should acquire this property. So that's, you know, the cart of the horse, you know?
Well, I think we do have interest in that trail. We have for several years.
Very much so, yeah. And that's, I mean, we actually had somebody unfortunately get hit, you know, on Park Lake Road, so.
Yeah.
That would, you know, be uh, and with the with the uh Hawks Ridge of. Tenants up there, you know, they're constantly walking to the to the store as well, so that would lend itself well to safety.
So just to, we're, I mean, the department's not looking for any action on any of this, but um. I guess, Cheryl, where are you, what are you looking for out of this discussion?
Uh, I'd like to have some kind of metrics that we use to evaluate these parcels and. I would kind of like to have us go through the ones that we feel have either market potential or should definitely be retained. And give a recommendation to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you want, I could put that in a letter so that we all have it and, you know, a letter for the board, if you want, with those parcels. That I've outlined, and I'll show those to you.
What what's the feeling of the people on the planning commission?
Does the planner have time to put together an on a statement similar to that?
We were hoping, I mean, the whole impetus of this is that this would be a planning, and I'm not trying to, or we'll do whatever you guys want us to do.
Right.
But we're hoping that the um planning commission member would take the lead on this.
Okay.
Just cause that's kind of how this all originated.
Right.
Yeah, and Jason.
Working on this and uh wants to pursue it, so I think it's a good opportunity.
Saying the next meeting, we go through some of the properties a little bit at a time, or we're gonna go through all the properties?
I get.
Three, possibly.
Not to jump in here, but I guess what I'm hearing and what I would suggest is. Uh, Commissioner Kocky puts together a letter with the properties as each season fit. You can obviously send us a letter.
Yeah.
And we'll look over it for grammar and just overall organization as we put it into the packet. Then at the next meeting, this body will be able to review the letter and give feedback to myself, and I I can make edits from there.
So how about if I if I address the letter to you and uh.
It should be addressed to the liaison to the board.
Okay, and that was, that's you, isn't it?
No.
No, no.
It was.
Oh, 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 you're talking about the township.
The township board.
Yeah, because the letter is gonna go to the board, but it should go through the liaison.
Right.
Okay.
Should go to Ryan at this point in time.
Yeah, okay.
Unless the board reports somebody to replace him.
What's the content of the letter?
Excuse me?
That what what is the content of the letter?
Uh, would be basically a.
Here's the parcels you guys own?
The three, the whatever the parcels that we determine, um, and the only, there's only three that I that I have uh.
The, not to jump in, the content of the letter, as I understand it, would be, here's our suggested uh terms on what we'd like you to consider when purchasing property. This is a policy that we're looking to uh adopt and give to the board. This is what we'd like you to look for purchasing. This is what we'd like you to look at selling. Uh, aspect of that could be, you know, if it doesn't work as a sale. Then it should just be retained because there's future uh value. And then. As we were going through these uh factors, these are some suggested properties that we would think may uh be beneficial in the sell category.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things, really. First, just just the general um. Rubric, if you will, to utilize for the township. And then uh John wants us to evaluate the properties that. Could potentially be saleable. So that's like a different uh obligation.
And if you give that letter to the board, just like we gave the ARPO letter to the board, and they, you know, do what they want with information, right?
Well, shouldn't shouldn't each property though be before all of us instead of just one person, like you?
Oh, that's that's it.
Yeah, he's just making suggestions.
Literally suggesting.
Yeah, next meeting, yeah, the letter we're going for this body probably, or whenever.
Nothing can happen.
It almost seems to me like that when you get a parcel you're concerned, the first thing you gotta do is figure out what is the highest and best use of that parcel. Regardless of who owns it. What should that parcel be used for?
You mean if it's just come upon by the township? Is that what you're saying?
Even a parcel we already own.
Okay.
What's the best use of that parcel?
Okay.
For a park, is it for apartments? What is, what's the best use of that parcel?
Yep.
Cause without knowing that, how do you know what to do?
Right. And that that's why I sent you that list, and um I encourage you to go on if. I hope everybody knows how to use Fetch G I S.
No.
Are you serious?
I've not done that.
Oh, it's it's a tool like you won't believe.
That's something you could put in your letter, though. You could say this is the highest best use for, you know, X property.
Yes, and that's what I use for. Did you have a question, Mark?
No.
Is Fetch an app that we, anybody can just get then?
Web-based, yeah.
Yeah, it's web-based.
Oh, yeah.
One of us, one of us would be happy to help you after.
Well, if you tell me the app, I can buy it.
It's that.
It's this.
Yeah.
It's just a website.
They, he's on there right now. That's what you see. And if you guys don't use it, Cheryl, I don't know if you use Fetch G I S, but. You'll, it's just, I mean, it's like falling off a log. That's how easy it is to use.
So just to clarify my understanding, the deliverable here would be a letter.
What's that?
To the board.
To our liaison.
To take to the board.
I'm failing to see the purpose of doing this work. A letter has no teeth, and it's the easiest document to lose over over time, as opposed to being codified. As some sort of internal policy. I I wonder to what extent, I mean, if.
Go ahead, go ahead.
If perhaps revisiting this to the board to find out what they would like to do, do they want it? Cause it's substantially a new board, and then what, in what ways can they, do they want to use the information? Perhaps rather than a letter, maybe they'll direct us to develop something a little more toothy.
So I was gonna say something with a little more teeth, like official policy, you mean?
Yeah. I I guess to to address that, Jason, uh, my concern was, this has happened about a year and a half ago that this was initiated.
Yes.
And we've changed a lot of the interest of the board and a lot of the emphasis of the board. We have a lot of new players, and I guess before I spent a lot of time and we spend many hours on this, was it is gonna take quite a bit of time. I'd like to know if it's something that the board supports doing.
Yeah, and they did ask us to do it, but.
What, that doesn't mean they still have that interest.
Exactly, and that was kind of nebulous anyway, so we should.
Cause it was, it was rather vague at the time.
I made the motion.
Well, I know, but a lot has changed in the interim though, Jason, honestly, so. You know, and we do pursue a lot of things that the board has supported very well, and I want to continue that relationship. I don't want to spend a lot of hours on something that the board's not gonna support.
True.
I don't know if everybody else concurs. You're welcome to disagree.
Support. If if they want the information.
Right.
We can do the work for them.
Correct.
But if they don't want it, now's not the time to put more work in this group.
So Commissioner Maridji, are you suggesting that the liaison like posed that question to the board?
Okay.
That's, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's that's the purpose of the.
Yeah.
The letter, I thought. Okay, gentlemen, can we move on?
Yep.
Somebody somebody uh had the uh initiative to send us a note about the uh. Meetings for the board.
I got, I got one item before that, Chair.
Oh, do you? I'm sorry.
The grading ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to talk about the grading ordinance?
Yeah.
All right, I skipped that one, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay.
That's wonderful. That's because of, this was one of my suggestions, gentlemen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I I reached out to the chair, um, maybe uh a week and a half ago. Um, we're starting to, you know, bad town, just to get everyone where we're at with this, uh, bad township, it's a wet township, a lot of water. Uh, a lot of development as well as of late, uh, development offsets drainage patterns, water's gotta go somewhere. Uh, creates externalities, uh, causes conflict, uh, the whole point of zoning and land use policy is to reduce conflict. So we're starting to have some conflict, and we don't have a lot of teeth to deal with that conflict from the zoning regulatory standpoint in the township. We obviously have a county drain commission, but they're also limited in scope of what they can do.
Yep.
So right now, we got two properties, and I won't, I don't want to get too down into the weeds here because I don't want to call anybody out specifically. Cause I don't actually know if we have an issue or not, and I can't prove if we have an issue or not by, I'm severe concerns, and the drain commission thinks these concerns are founded as well. And thinks something does need to be done here. Um, but basically, there's some grading, there's some landscaping taking place at scale. Uh, it's likely that it's gonna negatively impact the uh adjacent properties to these, and there's not really a lot we can do in the interim. So we came up with some very simple language. We think the language will be pretty effective. Um, we're, the best kind of ordinance is a simple ordinance that everyone can understand, that's easy to interpret, easy to enforce. Um, it's kind of the opposite, I guess, of the private roads ordinance. Can't really do a lot there because it's a complicated issue. Um, but this one isn't so complicated. Basically, all we need to say here, in my opinion. And uh, the drain commissioner's opinion is, uh, you are not permitted uh within the bounds of the township. Uh, to change the existing drainage pattern that negatively impacts adjacent properties or lots. And then uh the second half would just be if a landowner or controlling entity of the property has altered the established drainage pattern. Uh, that does negatively impact or cause harm to a dr- adjacent uh parcel or lot. Then the controlling, the landowner or the controlling entity that would initiated the new drainage pattern needs to implement corrective measures. Um, so something like a retention and detention pond to hold water on site.
That, if if I might.
Go ahead.
I think that um, if you want to see a an example of of this, if you haven't, John and I both agree that that. There's a property just behind the Clark Corners Mall on Clark Road, um, going east. Right on the, from the highway to Clark Road, um, that I just literally cleared it and bulldozed it, and it is. Draining, I mean, it's just eroding everywhere. So that's, you know, what brought it to John's attention. I I think.
Let's do it township.
Yes, but that's good township, but we don't want that happening here, you know, so.
Yeah, and right now, legally speaking, if a property goes ahead and they, let's say, let's say they're low lying. And let's say that, um, or let's say they're all on the same, um, elevation. That as like two properties are adjacent to them, but they bring in enough sediment or material to raise their elevation four feet. Um, and let's say they were the low point. They were holding all the water for the two properties adjacent. Now that water that they were holding is gonna go on to those properties, and those properties have homes, homes previously established. Now a new home is being built on the new high. Let's say they have crawl spaces or basements. That water is likely going in that crawl space or basement now. Legally, they can uh do a civil lawsuit against uh the new uh. Established development. But from the municipal side, we're totally out of it. There's really nothing we can do, there's nothing the drain commission can do. A simple ordinance like this would at least allow us to say, hey, you've affected the drain pattern, you're harming these parcels. Looks like you're doing a detention retention pond in the back. You gotta make this right here.
Can you enforce this?
It is enforceable. I mean, other municipalities have, and what do you think?
Well, I I'm just, um, so think of a house that has sunk into the ground and. But is also towards the top of a hill, and they they extend their drain pipes or whatever, the eaves troughs. Off beyond that uh uh low area near their house, but then the effect there is that that water then goes on to the neighboring property. Is that, does that qualify, or does that not qualify? I mean, so there's a, there's a number of things here. I hear you in terms of the the simplicity, but there's also um interpretation. And who's the final say on in interpretation? So what is a negative effect?
Yeah, and I I hear that too, and just so everyone's aware, this is just an idea we're bringing for introduction, but you can tell from how this is even formatted. That this isn't a full, we built out idea. Um, it could be something to that point where, you know, we'd have it reviewed by the township engineer. To determine if harm has been created and if it was caused by.
Yeah.
Um, that's because they're the office that's best suited to do that type of review.
Um, there is an ordinance in this township concerning this, something that I. I was ignorant in in it, it's happened verbatim on the lot adjacent to my house. Um, this was, God, it must have been fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, the uh. Person on the far side of this vacant lot at my house, uh, purchased the lot. Out from under me, I might add. I was gonna purchase it, but uh he then proceeded, I don't even know if he ever got permits or anything. But he then proceeded to bring in countless dump truck loads of filled dirt. Because it was very low, just like you said, it was the lowest portion in in a yard, on this side of the yard, on this side drained into it. And it was, we actually, when we were kids, we actually had to put pallets down there to walk on, so we didn't walk in muck and water. But he filled it in. I mean, he put it, brought it up like four feet.
Yep.
And I now have constant problems with water in my basement, and it's, I mean, cause the, you know, it's probably a good three feet above my my property. So, and I looked at that time or after that, and I did find some kind of ordinance in Bath.
I didn't see anything. I mean, I'd be open to looking again.
Something about raising the level to alter the drainage so that it adversely affects your neighbor or adjoining property or something.
That's what we're looking to establish. I didn't see that language, and we had the drain commissioner, we all look again.
I I, you know, maybe I looked on somebody else's, but I swear it was was in our township that I saw that. I'll see if I can find it, my files at home.
Yeah, I mean, let me know. That'd be great. I mean, that's what we're looking to establish.
Yeah, I'm almost positive it was here, though, that almost, almost like you have it written here.
I would, I would think the drain commissioners. They, unless it's county. Something too, because the the only concern I've got, we've got written right here is, is where he says it's gotta be retained on their property. Sometimes that's not the best solution.
True.
Especially if it's residential property, like where we live, example I've got is. My lot and the one next to us was really low, a part of it was, it was a low point, and it's actually, there's actually a county catch basin on each side of the road, right there. When the houses were built, they had to fill that in. And so when the house next door to us was built a little bit after hours, we had a heavy rain, and we actually had a river between the two houses. And I told the developer, you can't do that. He ignored me. So then I wrote, so then I wrote him a letter and pointed out the drain. I said drain code, the 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 drain stipulation is you cannot run your water on adjacent property, you've gotta do something. So we're after writing the letter, then he did put a catch basin in the backyard between the two houses, or actually on the other house, and built a. Pipe to the catch basin that the county already had.
Yeah, I mean, we have, the two properties are of significance in service right now. Like I said, we sent them to the drain commission, but okay, what should we do here? And they were like, well, we can't really do anything here.
Well, maybe they can't, cause you, they do, they control the county drains. But not every drain in the county is a county drain.
That's correct.
They just drains. But I think there's something, maybe, there's gotta be something someplace in the law that says you can't just flood your neighbor's property just because you feel like it.
Well, to.
Well, I would hope so, and I think there, I, again, you know, you can always take them to civil court. And at the, any judge, I mean, just common sense wise, has got a role in the favor, but that, again, like. The whole point of planning, zoning, land use regulation is to minimize conflict. And having a, even even requesting that a landowner take their neighbor to court is a barrier to entry. Cause they're like, okay, well, I don't have ten thousand dollars to spend on a lawyer. So you're, it's pretty, you're allowing a wealthy landowner, which we have this in bad township, we have homeowners coming in. And building seven hundred thousand to million dollar homes next to homes that are valued at. Um, well, now, I mean, they're probably valued at two hundred thousand dollars when they were bought, they probably bought for like fifty thousand dollars, but it's an older family on a fixed income. And so they're like, okay, well, my basement's flooded, so I guess I'm losing my home. And that's a real world implication of what we're dealing with. This isn't like, I, it's it's hard because we're talking about ordinances and in theory, how would this work? An example, but the real world implication is somebody's basement's getting flooded, and they don't know what to do.
Or septic field or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, or their backyard, like mine.
So do you think that this ordinance language in its simplicity would give the township enough leverage to. Reach out to the offending property owner and even though that this could be fought in court. Because of lack of definition, I'm.
Yeah, no, no, I think.
It would still be eighty percent effective.
This is an idea that we want to, just to be clear, this is an idea we were wanting to bring to this body, I was just doing.
This is an idea that we wanna, just to be clear, this is an idea we were wanting to bring to this body, I was just doing, I'll turn this back on, because I was just doing some searching here. Um, let me get back to, this is an idea that we were trying to bring this by, what do you guys think? Like, is this a good idea to look at, is it not a good, because we don't wanna spend a bunch of time. I think two good points of feedback is, one, like, there needs to be somebody to evaluate if we're actually in this situation or not, and that. Could take the form of the township engineer, and I guess my second point is. Um, obviously, we'll send this to legal counsel if this is something that this body feels. If this body's not interested in a policy or regulation like this, and just ignore everything I said, and we'll just move on. But if we are, if this body is interested, we'll send it to legal counsel, we'll see. I don't want, I don't wanna go down that path if there's no interest here.
Right, yeah, correct. There's no support, what do you think?
Have something? No, I was gonna ask you, you you know, you you brainstormed this, and rightfully so, um, would you like us to? Vote on it, or or make a motion, or?
I just need a sense from the planning commission if there's interest in pursuing this research at all, or pursuing a regulation like.
I mean, we're very thorough about uh site plans and things like that, that we control the drainage and the runoff, but. These residential issues, we don't really have any control over what they do. Uh, that's really the building department, and the building department doesn't address drainage at all, as far as I know.
And even just to expand upon uh situation here. When we review these residential uh, their plot plans for residential properties, you know, we're looking at the placement of the structure. Placement of accessory structures, we obviously have a little bit of teeth on where the drive can go, because we worked with the road commission on getting that drive permitted. And and the um, I guess, example that I'm referring to in my head as we're thinking about this ordinance. We did all that, and we talked about the elevation of the house and where everything was at. And then just to say how it went in real life is, everything was approved and everything was discussed. And there was a drainage, there were drainage implications for how surface water and groundwater were gonna move through the drive of the site. We required the developer to even um put in some extra culverts into the drive, which they complied with. But then, after everything was established and occupancy was granted, that same builder had a different job site that they were building a new home. And so now they're moving some dirt off the house, what do they wanna do? They don't wanna s- have to sell that dirt to somewhere to store it, they wanna get rid of that dirt for free. So they're bringing it to the low, the job site they were just working on, and they infilled this job site. And now the drainage implications, and by the way, they did this recently, so that soil is not stabilized, there's no grass on that soil. There's no hay or straw or netting on that soil, so where that goes in the spring is downhill.
Should have been a silt fence. There's sub- substantial too, it's not just a couple inches, it's feet, many feet.
Yeah, truckloads.
Well, I mean, throughout the township, and we get enough complaints run on this, seems like this would be a worthwhile activity, especially as you pointed out. We live in lowland areas.
Well, the other concern I've got, and I drive by this a lot on Webster Road, or, yeah.
Watson?
Watson. Um, there's four parcels that have been sold there in the swamp, and they've been sold as buildable parcels. And right now, there's about two or three feet of standing water in two of them. The other one, I wouldn't wanna walk through, I I certainly wouldn't wanna drive through unless I had a mud bogger or a track loader. Uh, but they they've been classified as buildable lots.
Classified by whom? Classified by whom?
The uh real estate people, they were sold as buildable.
But is it a wet, is it, is it, is it a wetland though?
It's not wetland as defined by the state.
See, that 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 may be, that may be something we, that's another issue we could take up at some point.
Well, the wetland, we, uh, we were, weren't we?
Yeah, the wetland ordinance is something that we're working on, the problem is, wetland ordinance is something that is highly complicated and huge impacts. And you have to do mapping, and it's, it's something that's hard to enforce in a ministry, where a grading ordinance felt like a easier stopgap measure. To at least shore some of this up, so if somebody shoots themselves in the foot, we don't really care that much. Um, you know, because they're not causing harm to anybody else, the grading ordinance can at least help us shore up them shooting somebody else in the foot.
Right.
Yeah.
The wetland ordinance more helps it, helps us not let people shoot themselves in the foot.
So, I mean, with, I mean, one recommendation for this is, if we take this on, put some guardrails on it so that we don't uh interject ourselves and petty.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, I was thinking about that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we don't wanna micromanage this.
So guardrails, body that needs to review or agency that needs to review to determine if an issue and legal counsel. This is kind of the feedback time game, but it seems like there is appetite and concern from this body on this issue.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'll just continue as people continue developing.
Okay, well, I think I got enough then to proceed, so I appreciate it.
Fortunately, this, when somebody, I don't care, if somebody brings in a subdivision proposal for twenty homes to fifty homes, whatever. Do we require them to submit a grading permit for that entire site?
Yeah, that would all, that would all get reviewed by this body and the board.
Then how do we enforce it, once he's built, even if he, he's totally built out? Somebody just buys one of those homes and says, I wanna regrade my lot.
Yeah, now, now you're in a realm where it's harder to enforce.
But that happens all the time.
Yes, it does, that's true, right?
Yeah, good, that that's what we're talking about here, so.
We, we don't have anything to to enforce that. We do if it's a commercial site and they didn't comply with this site plan.
And I'll keep this body updated too, and I'll, I'll keep you guys updated on like what the legal findings are here, if this is even enforceable or doable. And if it is a simple, now you can't do it, then, yeah, then, now we know.
Right, would this language also affect um retention of water on one's property that would normally flow into someone else's maybe water feature? As a negative impact?
I don't think so, I mean, that's something that we could look at, um, as a kind of a side note, like how waters transfer between properties. But to me, that doesn't seem like a harm. You're just watering into water.
It may be, a good example is the forge site and property just to the west of him. His concern, I heard expressed was, he was afraid it might dry his wetland up. And he was, he was assured that it wouldn't.
Well, then that does seem like harm to me, I guess, the scenario I was thinking of was, uh, you have a wetland and they have a wetland. And you're, some of your wetlands draining into their wetland. But yeah, if you, if you have a dry area and you'd like to make a pond on your property, and so you siphon in off of their wetland, that's, that's harm created. And you would also be our, our primary language we're going with, altering existing drainage pattern, that is altering it. If it's wet and it, and you're making it more wet, you're not really altering too much. But if you're, if it's dry and you're making it wet, then you're, yeah, you're altering the drainage pattern.
Right, correct. Okay, thanks.
Okay, cool, thank you guys.
Yep, thank you, gentlemen. All right.
All right.
Let's, let's go to the uh meeting dates then, my missed call here. Does anybody have any conflicts that uh stand out here?
And by the way, Sheriff, staff doesn't need action tonight, we just wanted to put this in your packet, so you guys can look at it and let us know what you think, we can either.
Would, would everybody review this then and see if there is any issues?
Twenty fourth one of December.
Fourth of December?
Well, he's already got a note for that one.
Yeah. Yeah, I see that, yep. Maybe there's some others here that might be an issue. Okay, Miles, do you have a report for us?
No report this week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's combine public comment and the the PFAS issue, if you don't mind, because the public is here.
Sheriff, you wanna? I've spent uh four days with federal officials. Learning what PFAS is, where it comes from, and I've got a lot of information for you all. I'm trying to get my master's degree finished in four days here on PFAS, and I'm overwhelmed with scary, scary things. Number one, most important to know, Michigan is not just the worst state in USA. But far the worst state for PFAS. This was a chemical, well, first of all, what chemical is it? PFAS is per and polyfluor- fluoric alkal substances. Also chromium six degrades into PFAS. This is a forever chemical, it never changes, it never goes away in our bodies anywhere. It causes all kinds of cancers, Parkinson's disease, lymphomas, you name it, it causes it. And we are the worst, there are areas in Michigan where you're disallowed to eat a deer who's eating on the grass. Or the fish that are in the water in this state. I talked to uh Dr. Patali, uh, the governa- govern- government official in New Hampshire. Uh, PhD and a toxicologist, his main field is PFAS. He was willing to talk to me over the holiday weekend for over an hour on Saturday, and give me information and people to talk to. You all probably have heard of the Erin Brockovich story, that's PFAS. That was uh chromium six degraded into PFAS. And way back in, this is just really interesting money wise, in nineteen ninety six. It was the Pacific Gas and Electric, they had lots of money, they were sued and they lost. The public won three hundred and thirty one million, that was the first lawsuit that they lost. The second one was in nineteen, uh, two thousand and oh six for another three hundred and thirty five million, and it's just getting started. So any thought of anybody putting PFAS in our environment has got to put a bond up, let's make that three hundred million. In today's money from thirty years ago, we're talking billions, it should be in a bond. Do we know anything about this company that wants to put PFAS in our area? Do they, are they a front company, or do they have a million or a billion or two billion dollars to back up what they do? We have in our state, Abigail Hendershot, she's the executive director of the PFAS Michigan Action Response Team. I am communicating with her also. Uh, that's part of Eagle. This is really scary. Um, my next door neighbor is officially David Wright, MSU Office of the Research Integrity. Research Ethics, he's in the Department of Agriculture. He also has a friend that will be contacting me in the next couple of days, PhD in toxicology. PFAS is her area of expertise.
Is that Cheryl Murphy?
Yes, yeah.
I was gonna recommend her, because she's.
Been, we're already in, moving along with this, so.
She also lives on Park Lake.
Ah, okay, and then there's the person that bought the big home from the owners of the Mackinac Island Hotel, they're involved in this somehow too. I'm going to work on that, but also, very interesting, from the New Hampshire fellow. And this is interesting time wise, our federal government is, they're starting to get more and more involved in PFAS. Because it's so freaking dangerous. And they're going, they're going to make a law, federal law, and they're not, they're balancing this out. Enforceable to the states or not enforceable. Now, why make a law if it's not enforceable, I don't understand, but this is what's being discussed, and it's going to be passed within weeks or a month or so. And this is from the government officials in New Hampshire, don't know, but if it's not enforceable, it's crazy. And this is going, what this law is going to do is say, Bath Township, we're testing your water. And this is the maximum level of PFAS you can have, or you shut down the plant, you shut down the water. My well is contaminated, my property will be contaminated. This is really scary, this has happened to farms in USA. One of the other things that's really scary is there are six different ones identified at this point of the PFAS. The government has in certain farms in it, as near as Howell, contaminated farms that were in families for generations. They burnt down everything, killed every cow, burned every cow and destroyed the farms. And they can choose which PFAS they test for, and then they can dump the other ones. Michigan, of course, is so bad, because we've had the auto industry here before regulations, before they even knew it was dangerous. Military bases, Camp Lejeune, what's that about, PFAS, killing people.
So Cheryl, just out of curiosity, so those farms that had been in the families for generations that were contaminated by PFAS. Those clearly weren't industrial sites previously, do you, do you have information as to what was the source of contamination?
They were dump sites, and Clinton River is one of the most contaminated rivers in the United States, run down through Ann Arbor. This is part of the watershed from those areas. They were manufacturing places and military bases and airports with fire retardant. And the uh, the one that was in California that was so bad for, and they're just getting rolling on that, that was used. Um, PFASs are really interesting, they're used to stop corrosion and hardened steel. And so this is why it's, it's so, and fire retardant, so it's so broadly used as will be here. And to add it to our wetlands, my well, it's gonna sink into our soil. And this is the most destructive thing I can imagine for this community. And I will continue to do my research, but I've going to have uh at least four PhD people. In this field of PFAS toxicology at our meeting.
The board meeting?
Oh, yeah.
So, what I know about the norm fasteners, um, is that their wastewater will go to SCUMA for processing. Uh, and based on past research, uh, there are federal and state regulations that. Uh, mandate the maximum amount of PFAS that uh can be present in uh the effluent that comes out of uh SCUMA.
Which one are they gonna measure here?
I'm sorry?
Which one of the PFAS will they measure here?
Uh, I can't speak to, it's a number of them, but it's certainly not all two hundred and fifty compounds. Uh, but I think it's the ones that are most prevalent.
Which method of removal, there's granular activated carbon removal, ion exchange resins, and high pressure membrane systems. And which system they use is depending on how efficient they are.
Yeah, no, I understand, but the suggestion that I have is perhaps bring SCUMA into the conversation to learn more about.
That's this woman that's the head.
They have.
Yep, that would be Abigail Hendershot.
She's the head of what, SCUMA?
She's a Michigan Action Response Team for PFAS.
Oh, she's not with SCUMA then?
Not, I don't think so.
SCUMA is our sewer.
What, what Jason, I think, was speaking of is.
Our local.
Is to get Southern Clinton County.
Oh, Southern, okay, yeah, I, well, I'm gonna go to the state and federal, and then bring that back into here. Because Michigan has dropped the ball on this so entirely. It's scary, it's starting to come more popular, more known, Camp Lejeune, this is.
Yeah, but those, just to interject, because I am familiar with the Camp Lejeune incident, I'm familiar with the Air Force incident here in the same mission. Those are from fire targets that were used openly, this is a closed facility, so it's your apples and oranges.
Totally closed, I, I, so I guess what I'm asking is, how is that, are those, if they're using PFAS? In which they probably are, because they have chromium.
Have you talked to an expert in that field?
I'm, I'm working that way, yes, that's, that's where this.
Because you can bring in a chemist to tell us about PFAS.
Where I'm headed, yeah, this Angela Hendershot is a PhD, she is response team. So she's, you know, is this system, I, I have no scientist, is this system closed, is it gonna be perfect? We don't know, any of us here don't know this, I'm trying to find the people that do know it.
We do know it, though.
We do know.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
It's a closed system, they're not manufacturing outside of facility.
There's, but there's.
They're taking water in from a municipal uh water system, which is border water and light. And they're discharging wastewater into a municipal wastewater system, which is owned by the township and operated by SCUMA. So, I, there's no.
There's, there's some, some controversy of whether they can possibly remove it from the water, that's what, that's what I'm.
They have to treat on site, because SCUMA won't take, yeah, and I, maybe that's what you're about to, yeah, they're.
They have an industrial pretreatment plant.
Yeah, and they're required by, SCUMA will be testing and won't take any wastewater that doesn't meet their standards.
Well, at this point, we don't even know that they're using coatings that contain PFAS.
When I ask, they would not say no. Very clear.
He wasn't, he was, he said he did not know.
He said, we are not, we won't currently or start with it.
Start out using it.
But based on requirements from some of our customers, we may end up needing to.
It, it, it is, everything I found, like I say, I'm on my way to learning about this. But uh, everything I've heard so far, I'm about ninety nine percent sure they will. It is used in this. It is used in this process. And the testing is really not very organized yet in any way, shape or form, whether they dump it or not. And I think this takes, we need to hire the best law firm in the United States that deals with PFAS and testing. We need to make sure and back this up that we don't allow this to happen here in our water. We could destroy the township. If it gets into our muck ground and our water systems.
I think what Jason was saying, we ought, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have all these other entities. I think he was suggesting that you also include the SCUMA people in your conversation and talk to them to see what they are, how they do their procedure, if you're at question of that, and then you have that information.
Right, add them to it.
Because when he suggested-
And have them here, so they can-
When he suggested something that you referred to, somebody else that wasn't in SCUMA, and he was referring to someone in SCUMA-
Add SCUMA to it.
Miles, our planner was. So that's what I think he was referring to, to make sure that them people are, are also contacted and your questions are-
So the testing reports are publicly available on the state of Michigan website, I think, DEQ. And so you can see, I mean, these, these are, they're, they're testing their outputs on a regular basis. And there are federal and state thresholds by which they can't exceed without going into a corrective action. So I have to imagine that as they're the primary recipient of whatever is coming from, what may come from this new facility, they would have a plan in place to maintain that, that whatever processes.
Difficulty historically has been, there's, you can modify the PFAS by one molecule and test for molecule with A in it. Now we change it to B and you don't test it. And when they test for C, you change it to Q and it's one molecule different. It's like estrogen, progesterone, cholesterol, it's just a little tiny bit different. So you test for the one, the one, you miss the rest of them. And this can be a disaster. That's what's happened to Michigan. That's why Michigan is the way it is, why we have so much pollution here. It's in Alpena, you can't eat a deer that runs in the wild because of PFAS. That's the farmer that raised beef down near Howell. They burned every single cow because one steak would put you over the limit for lifetime containment of PFAS.
Was that from manufacturing plants in Howell?
Yes, yeah. Just down, I think a little east of Howell, but the Clinton River is the worst in the nation.
Speaking of the Norm Fastener building, one of the things I noted immediately, of course, I'm not an expert, but, you know, one of the things we don't want to do is get it in the groundwater. And that building does not have any floor drains for that very reason, so that it doesn't contaminate groundwater. I mean, that's one of the measures that they have taken, you know? So, you know, and again, I'm not speaking for them, I'm just making an observation. But, yeah, maybe they have some more questions to answer.
We have to be very, very careful, very slow and have the best experts.
But I do know MDEQ or Eagle, I hate it when they change their name all the time. I do know that they are now watching this, you know, with a microscope.
It's, it's hot topic.
And they are going to be actively involved in the permitting of this facility, so.
Certainly just, we need to proceed very, very cautiously.
Thank you for your research.
I didn't do four days of research, I only did about four hours. But I did have a couple of meetings myself. As you've stipulated to here, it is a closed system, is an industrial pre-treatment plan. So it's clean to the measure that's currently a standard in Michigan before it even goes to SCUMA. That's how I say it, I don't SCUMA, SCUMA, whatever. And then they have their own processes also. The thing that's interesting to me is that the applicant, both the developer and the applicant that's going to do it, talked about them standing up to European standards, which I think is very important, because those standards are much higher than we have here in this country. As a matter of fact, just the beginning of 2023, the European Union has, there's been pushback, so it's not, it's not a guaranteed thing, but they're going to eliminate the use of any PFAS, according to the European Commission. They will not allow it. So I know that's just coming up in 2023, but they hope to have it in place by 2025. So-
Is it, is that the, the threshold they're going to, is 2025 they're going to-
They won't have-
They will phase it out gradually?
They're trying to, no, they're getting pushback, as you would expect from some potential, oh, I mean, whatever sites they would have there, whatever manufacturing sites they'd have there, they'll have some pushback. It's been written about, it's been printed about. My colleague, Mr. Al Marigi, I'm sure will be looking at this and the European Union standards. I can tell you that as recent as, I just got a couple of notes here, September, the European Commission has been being pushed against this and they have said that literally what they have found out, that there's less than 10% of PFASs that are actually required use, that they're currently going through. So what they're saying is you can tell us that in fact, this is absolutely essential for our corporations or whatever to have, but, but their position on this, no, there's less than 10% that's actually required use. And I think we're going and, and learning from other countries right now about what we can do as an alternate. And Michigan is a bad site, undoubtedly it is. But they're not going by the standards in the US anyway. They're going by much higher standards, including the standards of the fact that we're going to have a, a very strong industrial pre-treatment plan. SCUMA is on board with this, they've already been, it's already been submitted to them. And it, it's not like it's just going to be runoff, like it was pumped in the Clinton River for years and years and years. Those days are over. There's a whole lot of things that are going on where the government is intervening and taking a look at this and not allowing this to happen anymore, because we do probably have a lot of cleanup to do here in Michigan. But I think the thresholds are certainly being raised in, in this particular application with Norm, Norm Fasteners. I believe that they are probably leaps ahead of what we can even imagine in terms of how they do business. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm going to continue to look at this also because it's important to all of us in this community. And I didn't spend 31 years between here and the county committing myself to public service in this community without being aware and trying to stay constantly aware of what's going on in this community. So I will continue to watch this myself. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for any information.
Anybody got any questions or comments? Because we're down to Planning Commissioner and comments. I guess I would encourage everybody to go to the board meeting if you can, get as much information about this as you can, because if it is one of the conditions, it's got to be put on the permit that comes back in our bailiwick to-
Do we know yet which board meeting? Do you know which board meeting you're going to have your experts at?
We're hoping to do a week from Monday, because the, if you guys are going to go on changing the land use from agriculture to industrial.
It's still undeveloped, not.
It's been developed now for quite some time.
Yeah, it's, it's more likely to be on next Monday's agenda.
Is there any chance with the right of contract of them, that they say there's no PFAS or any relative PFAS or precursor PFAS involved in this land gap?
I don't think that's a condition. I mean, this, this body can evaluate and the board can of course try to place any condition they want on the special use permit. It doesn't need to come back to the planning commission, by the way. They could, you've tied, you've, yeah, tied conditions to the site itself, they can tie conditions to the permit itself.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
But I, I was discussing this issue with some staff and some agencies, trying to go over, what, what are the concerns here? What do we know about PFAS usage in Michigan in the past? I agree with everything that's been said tonight, that Michigan has a very poor industrial history of contamination. We have one of the worst, one of the worst offenders in the United States when it comes to leaky underground storage tanks for gasoline. So we just don't have a good environmental track record. However, like I said in the meeting last time, I don't think a legacy history of poor environmental track records needs to necessarily preempt us from ever establishing another industrial use in the state of Michigan ever again. Just like I don't think our history of leaky underground storage tanks should inhibit the development of another gas station ever again in the state of Michigan. I don't think, and I guess in my opinion, that one leads to the other. I don't think industrial use necessarily leads to contamination. I think it does have the potential to lead to contamination because it's an industrial use, so I think that point's well taken. Now, I, I try to think about the condition itself with all that being said. So whenever planners recommend policy or regulation to anybody, we're trying to account for a number of things. One of the things that we're trying to account for, I guess the most, is what are the practical implications of this policy, this condition, and what does enforcement look like? So that was our main discussion here is, right now, and talks with SCUMA, I see it and talks with Border Water and Light when we reviewed this whole thing, I see a closed-loop system that's tested 24/7. Now you're saying, and I, and again, I'm not an expert in this field, so I don't know, I'm not a chemist, I'm a chemical engineer, but you're saying that SCUMA could potentially miss some of the testing for PFAS depending on the type of PFAS that they're using or its chemical structure.
Correctly, that is happening. And I guess I would add, I'd like to add one more thing that I meant to, too much swirling around here is, people move to Bath to live in the country, we live in a marshland, it's a very special ecological place here. And a factory for me is huge, enormous factory, doesn't fit here. And I've talked to many neighbors, many people that have been here 30, 40 years or more, and I've gotten 100% what?
Yeah. Well, okay, so two things. So one, I'll address PFAS things, so, and then I'll address the land use. So when it comes to that, I, I guess we were more on the line of, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. There's already a regulatory infrastructure in place, there's already a testing infrastructure in place. We thought about, like, okay, well, what do you have them do? Do you have them discharged to a well and then you test the well every six months? Well, we didn't like that option because if they're discharged, if you even create the avenue for a well, now it has an avenue into the ground. So we're like, well, that's no better at all. We prefer that they treat and send it to the closed-loop system that's already had testing infrastructure. So then, do you put a condition in place to say, like, okay, well, no PFAS, no, like, no PFAS at all? Well, the pro, so there's two, twofold why that's problematic, I guess. One is, okay, well, how do you enforce? Like, does a township, Bath Township of 13,000 people with a working budget of $4 million, operating budget of $4 million a year, hire a chemist, test that? Do we put that cost on the developer? What does that look like? And then, like, are we going to ever be satisfied that that testing is totally independent of the developer if they're the ones paying for? Probably not. So there's a, there's an enforcement element that would be hard to that. I guess we trust SCUMA to do it more because they're paid by us and our independent body than a chemist paid by the developer to report to us, or on the other end, the Bath Township has to pay the chemist, in which case, like, to the expense of our taxpayer, which I, I don't like, I guess. And then the second, so, yeah, the first practical difficulty was how does it enforce? And the second practical difficulty is how do you pay for that condition? So that, that's what we waited. And then to the land use argument that was just brought up, the planning commission had a split vote on this. It wasn't unanimous on if we, if they thought this was the right fit for this community. By majority vote, the recommendation was to approve the special use permit with the suggested conditions. Now, the board has the pleasure of voting whatever way with that recommendation. So if you just think that this is, you know, in, in your opinion, in your analysis, that you don't think this is a good land use and a good fit for a Bath Township, and that's where you're at in your heart, then no, far be it from me or anybody else to tell you how to vote on this.
I know, you see what our voters, what our taxpayers and voters come to the meeting and what happens with that. And then anybody that doesn't vote the way our voters, if our voters are 95% no and our board votes yes, there's a problem.
Yeah, I just think that, and not to interrupt, I, I can only make my recommendation based upon what the comprehensive plan is. And it's zone de-development, I laid it out at the meeting, you know, it's right by the highway. There, there's a, I only want to get into it again because there's so many factors that went into our analysis.
Yes, yeah, there was.
So the, the fact of the matter is, I mean, the concern is about protecting our lands, right? And so, and, and I have, I have agreements with you in terms of, I have concerns about PFAS, PFAS, the whole set of compounds. And I've been curious about this ever since talking to some folks who are experts on this. Fact of the matter is, is, you know, every year, our farmlands are fertilized with-
Lefosate.
What's that?
Lefosate is, Monsanto's been sued a million times over, lefosate. We can pump that into every farm area we want and nobody gives a shit about that.
Right. It's in the food.
But also the land-applied human bio-salads, which do come from SCUMA and other municipal sewer authorities. And so PFAS comes from a wide range of compounds, not just industrial efforts. Every time you go to a restaurant and you handle a waxy receipt, you're contaminating yourself with a small amount of PFAS. And so I think there's larger issues here, and I congratulate you on doing your master's research in this area. And I, I think that there are policy efforts that can be used. And I think those policy efforts would best be served at the regional or state level. Not so much what, I think what we're fairly clear on is a closed system with two catchalls or two catch places to eliminate PFAS from what's being sent out of the facility.
That, and I think we have to listen to our electors if we want this in our community.
But we also want them to have correct and valid information.
Yes, absolutely, no doubt. Contamination, traffic, everything, all of it's relevant. And it will become very public, which it hasn't yet, I promise. There's many news medias that would be informed.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I think Mr. Phillips also had another statement.
Oh, did you have anything more you wanted to say, Mr. Phillips?
No, I'm, I think I've pretty much covered, but I need to say thank you, George. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else?
Yes, thank you, Miles, again, for all your legwork behind and, and all those that work in your department. It's greatly appreciated. A couple of these things were pretty lengthy and, and as we find, as we go through them more and more, we, especially Mr. Ray down there finding stuff.
Oh, yeah. No, thank you, thank you to Ray and thank you to our interns that really helped. I, I don't deserve even half the credit. Ray did a lot on this, our interns did a lot on this.
But it's greatly appreciated. It is.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Can I get a consensus vote? Would you favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone object? Thank you, gentlemen. We're adjourned. It's about 10 minutes after eight.
I thought it'd be a short meeting.
I wish I could have printed that out and had it in front of me.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I was going, I was actually going to print out 10 copies, but it was 12 pages long and it was in color, so I said-